Mr. Chair.
Very good. Let's call the board meeting, regular meeting session. We can start with a roll call. And Trusty Martin.
Here.
Trusty Holmes.
Here.
Trusty Reed.
President.
Trusty Washington.
President.
All right. Seems like we've got a forum. Tonight, we're going to go in a little different order. We're going to go into our work session in this first half of the meeting. And we're going to maybe go into close later on. So I want to start by welcoming all of our guests. Those who are independents online. Dr. Beatty, do you want to start the work session? Are we?
Yep. I'm ready to go.
Good.
We want to start with saying happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday.
She about to put Steve Harvey out of business.
Did you say I got skills? Didn't you say?
No.
All right, Stevie Wonder would be proud.
Trusty Holmes, we missed his birthday. It was in July and because we didn't have a meeting. And then Trusty Washington's was just last week. So on behalf of the board, she received a lovely bouquet of flowers.
I did, it was gorgeous.
And Trusty Osborne is just thrilled to death with his birthday gift. Would you like to share?
It's a, it's a, we decided to keep a business local to garment fit that. We can support a local business and an extra large T-shirt.
Trusty Reed, are you able to hear me okay? I said, we're all in masks. I want to make sure that doing a sound check, make sure you can hear me okay.
Check mic one, check mic two. I hear you real good, DJ. Yes, I hear you well.
Thank you. All right, the board calendar. Our next board meeting is September 23rd. Our location is to be determined. It'll determine where we are in our protocols and so forth. We also have the ACCT Leadership Congress. And we submitted a proposal and it has been accepted. Thanks to a couple of people around in this room that helped to prepare it. Ms. Garcia and Dr. Chawanna. It is leading through an educational tsunami. So Trusty Washington and I will be representing the college to talk about how we survived through preparing and pivoting for COVID through also a technology disruption at the same time. So they accepted that proposal. And then we'll have our board meeting on the 21st. We are hopeful to be in the administrative center then. Next up, we've got Jessica Ramirez that is going to provide us with an update from the foundation.
Well, I have some great news. Do you want me to share it, Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
That's right, hot off the presses.
Oh, I included it. I updated the numbers.
So yes, oh, well, not up here yet, but they will be. This 10,744 just jumped to 11,074. How about that?
11 million.
Yes, yes, sorry. About this is right, a $300,000 grant from the DeBrueck Foundation. And if you're following us from month to month, you know it's been on the list. So it's so nice that Dr. Beatty and Dr. Swanson was able to solidify this grant. It's hot off the presses this week. So that's why we made that big jump. And we're at 55% of the goal just only within a year. So we're making a really good jump. Great announcement. I'd like for you to all consider a new board member. Her name is Catherine Bolt. She's with Honeywell and has extensive time there at Honeywell, over 20 years. Dr. Beatty and I, along with Matt Johnson, had a chance to meet with her. And she's excited to learn more about MCC and be a part of MCC Foundation. And so it is on our recognition tonight and consideration for our board.
And I wanted to thank Jessica for her leadership. She has a opportunity at another institution. And so she has submitted her resignation, boo pissed. But we're so excited for her and we are sure that you will rise to the occasion. So thank you so much for all of your.
Members of the board and all everyone here. Had a chance to work with all of you over the last several years. And so, so nice to see where the foundation is at and where we'll be going. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jessica's last day will be on the 14th. So this is her last board meeting. We wanted to make sure we acknowledge her today. We've got some informational items. And first up is Ms. Gachas and Dr. Meyer to talk about the gear funds. These are the, well, they're probably, no, I don't know. These are the governors, the state dollars grants. Oh, Governors Emergency Education Relief Fund. And they're going to tell you how we're going to spend it because you'll start seeing these items come forward.
Sure. So welcome to the board and Dr. Beatty. We are getting familiar, alleging with the term gear, Governor Emergency Educational Fund. So when you, when you hear that term coming up for repurchases, that is the grant that we received. And tonight, we're just going to run through quickly some of the items that were in that proposal. You can see that there are some high dollar items. And of course, those will be coming to the board. And we will also have some lower level purchases. But the whole design of this proposal was for Public Safety Institute. And it's almost to the tune of $900,000. We're very excited about it. And I just want to show you visually some of the things that we put in the proposal. Ideally in the proposal, we wanted to increase more training experiences for students at PSI. We wanted to be able to move the program around so we could showcase it to potential students at fairs and different types of things. We wanted modernized equipment, promotion of public safety in general to the community. And we wanted to remove access barriers. So when we wrote the proposal, those were the things we kept in mind. You can see that we've got a vehicle coming that helps us transport the oxygen tanks for the fire trainers. This thing in the top right is a simulator for driving a fire truck. And you can put software in so they can drive an EMS vehicle and a police car. And it's high quality, real life experience, safety equipment for the fire. And then a lot of the SIM simulated mannequins. We have pediatrics, adults, and so on.
I would just add, this is for fire, police, emergency medical technician. So the equipment will be used in all three programs and really bring us up to state of the art in public safety realm. Thank you and take any questions.
Questions? It's exciting that governors are, we've already received these, been awarded these funds. So we'll be moving forward with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chancellor.
True.
We often see in the source of funds column, we'll see grant. And is it possible sometimes to identify the grant? I mean, I'd kind of like to see gear as goes through. Would that be too much of a problem?
Say that again.
So her.
Identifying the grant, which is the source of dollars for purchasing that we're making. It will say grant.
It'll just say grant normally. And we usually keep it general because in a lot of cases, we may be pulling from more than one grant. So where it's possible and we know for sure, but it's, I feel his eyeballs on me. What he would say, talking about Don, Dr. Frichelle. What he would say is sometimes we don't know exactly. So if we say bring something to the board and it says gear grant, and then we end up spending $100 more out of general funds, we would have to come back technically to the board. So that's why we keep it jumping.
Mr. Vice Chairman. I'm drumming.
I'm sorry, it gave me a complicated answer, but I could.
No would have been sufficient.
I would never want to tell you no without an explanation.
Sharing information.
Yeah. And quite frankly, I've asked the question myself. So that's why it's a fresh answer for me. But it's, yeah. All right, we are moving into some computer replacements. And you'll see these items coming up on the agenda in future meetings. So we wanted to give you a heads up and provide you with an update. Dr. Chawanna.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, for the opportunity. Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, members of the Board of Justices. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide this informational item to you. I have to move my mask for the sake of the people that are on the. Next month, two, you requesting board approval for the purchase of 1,700 computer laptops. Out of this, three computer laptops. 1,350 of those, 1,350 of those will be towards replacing or aging computer hardware within our network. The, and the remaining 350 will be going towards our student loan program that allows us to be able to provide technology for the students who may not have the wherewithal to buy this technology. So they get to borrow those laptops from us and then they get to return them at the end of the semester. The total cost for the 1,700 laptops would be $1,956,000. $1,956,000, sorry. No checks for that. And we will be requesting another $3,000 for a total of $2.2 million. And that's because of the unprecedented times that we're living in. Right by shifting costs and shifting needs. So we want to be in a position to be able to respond to those needs when they arise. The next slide provides a breakdown of those laptops. As I said, 350 of those will be going towards our student loan program. Student facing laptops, you know, 140 of them, these will be going to the campus. These are campus available on campus whenever students, whenever a student needs a laptop and they're on campus. You know, they can even borrow one and return that laptop on the same day. Then we have students facing desktops in the last, you know, 650 of those. Classroom instructor PCs, those are PCs that are found within the teacher work sessions in the classroom. 320 of them employee facing desktops and laptops, both 120, 120 desktops and 120 laptops. So it's going to be about 1,700 laptops for a combined cost of 1.956. And as I said, we have $3,000 extra for a total of $2.2 million, which will be next.
Any questions for Dr. Chawanna?
Dr. Chawanna, when's the last time we made a purchase like this?
This is annual cost. So every year, you know, our computer replacement program is a doctor faced approach whereby we replace them based on the life expectancy of the devices. So typically, every five years, we get to replace aging technology within our network.
And then does this help our efforts for the distance learning and seeing that maybe there's some hot spots? We're trying to introduce some hot wireless?
Correct. You know, it's that sort of strategy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Chawanna.
Thank you. And we'll go over items on the agenda and the financial report. I mean, Frichelle will give us some highlights.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, members of the board. This evening, I take this opportunity to update everyone on our financials. So as you look at the particular chart, again, I call your attention to the last column, the bottom figure, 6.4%. Just so everyone knows that the calculated target would be 8.3%. So we're well below that particular target. But again, this is a snapshot in July and the semester will soon be upon us. And so there is some cost of spending that will be happening in the next month or so. This, again, this cycle shows the, how we're proceeding into the expected cycle or receiving our revenue and our expenses. You should be able to glean from this is that we, again, this is a snapshot in time for July. This helps you see that both our revenue and our expenses, fluctuations are well within the expected range.
We also, every month, have been giving you a capital projects update. But before I transition, I would make one comment about the financials. We showed you July, June, obviously was our closeout year. We didn't have our meeting in July. And once those books are audited for FY '21, we'll come back and share with you the audited end of year statement for FY '21. We'd like to keep you abreast of the capital projects that we have on tap. And I think Dr. Frichelle and Mr. Jeff Omen for any questions about the financials before I move on to this topic. Okay. Dr. Frichelle and Mr. Omen will provide us with a capital projects update. As you came into the campus, I mean, the building, the engineering technology building is finished. I think 99.9%.
That's exactly the case. So what you'll, what you'll see is, is engineering tech building is at 99%. What we're doing is, is final closeout, the punch list, go through all the little nuances that we need to take care of. And then we'll get our official occupancy. And so that project is coming along very well. The other project, APSI, I'll have a few pictures you'll see. It's, but if you happen to drive down truth, you'll start to see the big wall that used to go on brick. It now opened up and there's windows and a canopy. All additional assets asked previously to add that nice canopy to it. So you're going to start to see a real nice projection of this particular facility. And later on, we'll talk a little bit more about the APSI. And then the Blue River Campus, those of you who were able to join us, that's the normally, I think, but it's kind of artifact that went into the construction. That project has really progressed along very well. And everything's on track and everything is on budget. So what I wanted to share with the board and the community is, is that, you know, we, we've successfully moved the engineering tech facility and all the materials from the MCC Business and Technology, the BP Campus. And that cost us about $21,000. We're now preparing to move all the remaining stuff sitting in the MCC Business and Technology facility that will relocate it to the other two facilities as we get ready to close down MCC BP Campus. So I wanted to share with you a little bit of what those numbers are. We're still working on a projection for the print shop. Of course, I cannot development, library, etc., the support services. But we have a good feel for the projection for the east, the Blue River East Campus, the Lyman. And I'm going to go a little bit more in depth on the Advanced Technology Skills Institute because I think you're starting to raise your eyebrow about half a million dollars to move the, to move this equipment. So let's dump a little bit deeper into the defense technology, which will start. But this doesn't do justice. But this is that brick face that I was talking about. All flags is going in and canopy. So this is going to be the new main entrance. Use the entrance of this facility used to be on truce. And now it's on the north side of the building into the parking lot. So it would be a greater access and better access for our students, faculty, and community to get into the facility right out, right off the park. And you'll see that it's progressing along. A lot of stud work and finish work is going into that particular project. So let's talk a little bit about who. I shared this slide just for informational purposes, but to move the equipment, that $540,000 or $540,000 move is only going to be eight miles. And it's 17 or 16 minutes by car. But I want you to understand is we're crossing several main thoroughfares, etc. And it's going, we're moving heavy equipment. Okay, you can go to the next one. This is, so let's talk about what has to happen more specifically for the APSI. And I've got a few more pictures that I'll show you so you'll get a better feel for what's going on. But the first thing that we need to talk about is before we even move the equipment, we're talking about some pretty massive equipment. We need to disconnect it. I mean, this, this equipment is not just plugged into the wall like a refrigerator. Well, maybe it is to a certain extent, but it's got, if you've got a water line in your refrigerator and electrical, all that stuff has to be disconnected and properly disconnected. So that when we get to the point of reconnecting it to the new facility, we know what all the connections are and all needs to happen. So that's why we're looking at this is it's a best practice to have people who take, dismantle the equipment, disconnect it from the existing facility, also be the same group that reconnects it. So it's a best practice, as you say, is if you disconnected it, it was working when you disconnected it. Now, when you reconnect it and make it energize it in the new facility, it needs to work like it did back in the old facility. And so what we're looking to do is, is ask, and it'll be in the request that we will be asking you in item 6.3 is to take, we want to contract McGowan Gordon, the effort to not only dismantle, disconnect, but then to reconnect everything back in the new facility. So what they'll do is they'll disconnect it, electrical plumbing, gas, etc. They'll prepare it and then the movers will come in and actually move the equipment to the new facility. They'll put it in place and then they walk away. And then they ask the down board vendors come in and reconnect it to the new facility. That make sense? Okay. So that's the next slide. So this is what this equipment looks like. And I recognize it's kind of busy, but one of the first ones is like the EDM, the electrical discharge machine. Best way to describe it is this is the size of a Volkswagen Beetle. It's got fluid in it, it's got electrical, got plumbing. I mean, take a look at some of this electrical, look at all the plumbing that we're going to have to deal with. Is, I mean, and that's, you could go in there and just cut these things off. But then the person who has to reinstall it needs to say, is it, where did this pipe come from? What, what does pipe do? So again, people who are disconnecting it and dismantling it are the people who are going to be putting it back together and connecting it and energizing it at the new facility. Okay? So we're the next slide. So this is, so why, why is it a half million dollars move? This is, guess what? We're talking about riggers, for clips. A lot of this stuff is not people movable. You're going to need to use equipment. We've got lades, we've got bench equipment, mills, and a good number of this equipment that's going to be placed in the APSI.
Any questions? At our board meeting in, last year in January, we did a request for, we did a guarantee, Matt, I'm sorry. The movers, which item is that?
Move is, to answer the question, moved into offer bid.
5.4.
5.4. Yes, it did go off our AP. And it turns out that one of our major movers in this project is minority business.
And we went out, when we took it out for bid, we did the bid for on-call moving services so that we would have a moving company on-call as we moved all of these equipment to different facilities. We had, we chose to take an on-call approach because we didn't know, we don't know what we don't know when we're going through the process of construction and what it may take to, to move. So that's why we did it on-call with the board. That was February of 2021. And the amount that was approved was a base amount. But on-call is exactly that in the same way that we have on-call electricians, on-call architects. As services are needed on-call, we bring them in. But because the authority is obviously much higher than what we had anticipated. So that's for the move.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
When we add parts together, the physical move plus the disconnect, reconnect, we're talking about what, 1.5 or so?
Yes.
Okay. So we knew we were going to have to move. But when exactly did we figure out it was a good idea? Which it is, I'm sure. The way you explained it certainly is a good idea to have particularly the architect be the one to reassemble this material, get it in place. That came, I mean, that was not part of the original agreement with McGowan going in terms of what they were going to do for us, correct?
That's correct. It was only the construction part.
So we self-selected, we self-selected to identify contractors that are already working on the contract. I'm sorry, working on the project through McGowan Gordon because they're familiar with the infrastructure of the building. We could have gone to somebody else and another plumbing and electrical company to do the disconnect, assemble, and reassemble of all of this equipment. But we would be risking their lack of knowledge of the project and the walls and the connections and things that they have to do. The amount of concrete that needs to be underneath some of this equipment to avoid any damage. So that we, this is a, on that piece that you're referring to with McGowan Gordon is a change order that we have on the agenda. But it's a self-initiated change order in this case. And not like in contrast to when we hit the roof where it was like, oh, we go into the roof and we discover whatever we discover and it results in a change order. In this case, we self-selected it because it's the best approach for the safety of the equipment. We, and I think I would add that we weren't, especially going back to Trusty Osborne's question. When we went into this, we truly did not know and to, and have any way of anticipating how much of the equipment would be going and how much would be staying. And so working with the faculty through last semester, I think Jeff and Don told me yesterday they've been getting these calculations since June. So that's, that's probably more than you asked for, but I want to be as thorough as possible to help you understand.
I appreciate that. It's a, certainly it's a significant amount of money. I don't know if it's a good comparison of the route and this process. Clearly, this was our.
Right. Right. I was doing it in contrast, yeah.
Yeah, but we wound up paying for both. So I don't know that that's a good comparison. It certainly makes sense. It's just a surprise to realize it was going to cost that much money. Thank you for the explanation.
I have a question. Mr. Chair.
Trusty Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. My question actually relates to the very first slide. And perhaps you guys can go back to that.
Further back?
No, I think it's the very first one that you all had. The one right before that. There you go, yeah. Yep, absolutely. Could you, could you probably talk a little bit further about just these numbers that are indicated on, on this list? And particularly, I am concerned, or not really concerned, but would like for you to talk a little bit. And particularly, I am concerned or not really concerned, but would like for you to talk a little bit more about the M B E, W B E numbers. I know you all are too young to remember cassette or, or record players, but if I was a, a record player, this would sound like a broken record because I keep saying the same thing every meeting. But would like for you to highlight these numbers. And then I have some comments I'd like to make afterwards.
I'm not sure what you.
The percentage of
Right, so the percentages haven't changed since we began the project. That number has pretty much remained static. We do our best to identify, we, you know, as you know, working with this project made that we stressed that whoever got the project that we had minority and women-owned business and veteran-owned business participation in terms of subcontractors.
Yeah, and I, I think that probably goes to the heart of my potential editorial comments that I'm going to make at this time, which are the other day, I appreciate the staff giving me a tour of our facility on truce. And I had an opportunity to, to really marvel at the good work that has been done in that facility, but I was slightly disappointed with the workforce. And so this comment probably is more so for our vendor in terms of ensuring that we are pushing them. As we've talked about many different times, the importance of ensuring that our workforce reflects the diversity of the community in which this project resides. And I am hopeful that as we move forward, it sounds like we're on time, on budget, the facility looks great. But I think we're missing an opportunity on such a large-scale public project to have individuals who live within the community, who work within the community to be working on, on a signature project, not just on this campus, this particular site, but also the other two, for them to take pride in ownership in it. And so I'm hopeful that as we move forward with not only this capital project, but other projects within the institution, that we have an opportunity to potentially reflect the great diversity of our community. Because it's not, it's, it's great that we're meaning the, the numbers and we met them, but as we get toward the end, as I said in the beginning of this project and my broken records bill, is that we should be exceeding these numbers in ensuring that local participation and diversity is reflected. And I did not unfortunately get an opportunity to see that. Matter of fact, I probably only saw one person of color, and that person was holding a stop sign outside the facility when I was there, and everybody inside were all white males. I didn't see a person, one, one woman, one person of color inside the facility working at all. And so obviously that goes down a bit further into the weeds as it relates to workforce. But that's more so where I'm concerned about and something that I think that we have to ensure that we are getting aspirational goals, but we're pushing the envelope and ensuring that we're doing better. And I'm hopeful that someday we don't have to have this conversation. But I do think it's important to provide these editorial comments. And if someone has a response, great. If not, you best believe I'm going to continue this conversation as we move forward. I appreciate that we do have a docket item later in the agenda that almost half of those resources goes to, they are slated to go to, to minority vendors. But again, what does that workforce look like moving those things? So this is again a different topic, but I, I'm hopeful that we are able to pay some closer attention to that as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee, trustee Warson.
Chair, I just want to briefly say I echo trustee Reed's sentiments. I think for the five years I've been on here, we, we talked about this. But I also want to caution us, including trustee P, that we do not legally have the right to make, to mandate any minority or women participation. So we want to applaud those vendors that are doing that because we do not have a disparity study, which is required by law to do that. Hopefully, we will be able to be in a position where we can possibly partner with some other public entities to get one. But until that, we are a little different from the city of Kansas City, who does have a disparity study and had one thanks to the work of trustee Reed when he was on the city council. But without that, we do have to caution that because we do open ourselves up to litigation from non-minority and non-women-owned businesses when we mandate or even suggest that there has to be a percentage of disadvantaged businesses because we don't legally have the right to do that without the Supreme Court's requirement that there be a disparity study first identifying and, and, and stating that we are not doing what we need to be doing with respect to our contracts. I just want us to keep that in mind, that while we applaud the efforts of our contractors and vendors, and we do want to continue to make suggestions, we cannot mandate their numbers. So that, that's something that we probably need to, to put on the front burner is working on getting a disparity study and finding a million dollars to do that. Thanks.
Well, I, if I could respond. Yeah, thank you, and, and I appreciate Senator Washington's comments. And I, and I, I certainly, as you alluded to, know firsthand the importance of the disparity study. Having led that during my time on the city council, and I caution and temper my remarks as I started at the onset of my comments in terms of these editorial remarks. As we go later in the future in our aspirational goals, yes, I think you have helped drive the ball down the field a little further, is that, 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 that is the direction in which we need to make sure we, we're going in. And I want to make sure, as, as a member of this board, that, that's the direction that we, we work with our municipal government, the, the school district, the county, to ensure that we're, we're participa- participating in that. So I appreciate your additional editorial comments so that there is no confusion as it relates to anything that I'm talking about. But it's important that we, we're talking about it now so that we're moving forward in the future to participate and ensuring that these type of capital projects and other projects have this level of participation. So, thank you.
So while I'm very pleased with the fifty-two percent of minority and women-owned business participation that we have with our vendors, I think the point is well taken that having the contractors is one thing, but the workforce is quite another. So we'll continue, I pass the concerns on to our construction manager, or that's not the default, yeah, construction manager at risk and made them aware of when it was brought to my attention because that is something that they certainly could have some control orders. Thank you both for your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Bean. And continue, Dr. Bean.
So on consent, just highlight a couple of these, the appointment of the secretary and alternate secretary. Taking a different approach and recommending Sandra Garcia as the official board secretary and certifying all of the meetings and Eureka Patton, who is working in the office, will be the alternate secretary and the person behind the scenes doing a lot of the things and getting preparation for, for the meeting. You'll see a lot of funding from external sources that is related to our campaign, as was recently highlighted. Quite a few our commencement venue, we're diversifying our locations every year around our service area. And this year, Cable Dahmer Cable Dahmer Arena is the location that could accommodate all of the needs, mainly the date, but it also is providing us with the technology and which is huge, the technology is huge. That sometimes when we're down at municipal is a, that's a whole nother price tag. So that's, that's good. Hotspots and the media management system, those were approved last year under emergency authority because we went into offering our classes virtual and we thought we would be done with it, that contract ends in August, those contracts end in August. But given where we are, we want to make sure that we've got this technology in our pocket should we need it. So we did not take those out to bid, we're asking to renew that emergency authority because it's still an emergency that we did not anticipate. We thought by August we were gonna be good to go, so. We have a slip sheet, we, and this is what happens sometimes in August or any board meeting because we have people who accept offers since the meeting was published. And so we have an administrator, Kim Green, who will be the director of campus operations at the Maplewood's campus. She's an internal employee from the Longview campus, currently, I think, the enrollment manager at the Longview campus. And Ashley Snyder Cox, a faculty member in the health sciences. So that is an overview of the consent agenda, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Bean. And so this, we are going into close later on, so we're gonna go right into the work session right now.
Regular session.
Or regular session. Let me catch up. Dr. Bean?
Thank you for this opportunity to provide my regular report. We are returning to campus, our students are back. And we've had a number of welcome back activities. They had a Wolf Stop Music Festival at Blue River. They had the Wolf Pack Welcome at Penn Valley. We also had the same occur at Longview. And I just wanted to give you some highlights on how we're returning. We are, we have enhanced nightly, so we are gonna have classes in person. We still have fifteen percent of our classes still virtual. We have, so that reduces the traffic somewhat. We've got a mask mandate, we only lifted it for a week and then things started to turn, so we brought it right back. In fact, I think it was less than a week. We have enhanced cleaning with the virus sites nightly. We've been hosting vaccination sites. And we should have had a drawing today. Rosemary, by any chance, do you know the winners? I haven't been notified yet of the winners, but yesterday ended our drawing that we had for five one thousand dollar incentive payments for employees. We're also offering students free classes to try and incentivize the vaccine. And we're still keeping a Plan B in our pocket, which is why we have some things on the agenda. Those emergency items that I'm requesting to extend, for example. We're still keeping Plan Bs in our pocket should things escalate. In terms of enrollment, our enrollment is up. Now, this was Monday, I think I saw the report today. So anyway, we're, we were up over twenty twenty, which is good news. We're still chasing twenty nineteen, but today the report said we were only down nine percent. But I'm showing you the report as of Monday. So two thousand and nineteen is the benchmark we're striving for because that was pre-COVID. So this is pretty good. I've got information about some of our colleagues in the area, and I will say that we are performing above some of our competitors in the region. I won't call it out since this is a public meeting, but if you're interested, I have it right here.
Do you think, I've been thinking about the distance learning and, and I've noticed that we're, we're, we're keeping that protocol. And do you see the distance learning is, is helping us increase our number for enrollment?
Our MCC online campus enrollment has been increasing over time. This is prior to COVID, and that's just the nature of how higher education is moving. But we're not an online college, and so we are being very strategic and I don't want to say capping it, but tapping, I'm gonna go ahead and use that word. We, we wanna keep that at a place where it is, you know, we don't spite our nose, what is the saying? You know, if you've got all these classes online and, you know, then you get them in person. You know, while there are people who need both, we just, we need to be strategic about that because the mission of our college is not to be an online college. But it is grow, has grown and continues to grow and that should, we should see that level off. So I think, yeah, so I think that actually online has trying to remember, but I think they still have the highest growth this semester.
Thank you, Dr. Bean.
And it's been that way probably for the last four or five years.
Trustee Mark.
Dr. Bean, where are we in, it's very hard to remember since this past year has been so strange. Where are we in terms of days out from first day of class and?
Classes start on Monday or Tuesday, which one?
Tuesday. Tuesday, so we're just the next time you'll be making the comparison, or I guess you do that on a daily basis.
Oh, yeah, we do that on a daily basis now, yeah. So I'll probably send you all a board letter to give you a, you know, once school starts, they give you a capture of where enrollment is. Now, bear in mind, we enroll throughout the semester because we have other sessions, we've got maybe, I don't want to call it late start, but I'm getting a lawsuit.
Short-term classes.
Well, it's, it's not.
That's what we call it on the website.
Okay, twelve-week classes, eight-week classes, we still have. So some of the challenges we still have is our state's perspective on vaccinations that I think prevents us from having broader vaccination numbers in our region, the politicizing of mask wearing and so forth. So we've had a lot of conversations internally about accountability and holding everyone accountable when you don't see people with the mask on or worn correctly. We just had our emergency management team meeting yesterday and things are leveling off. I don't, you know, but we've gotta maintain that for at least two weeks, but the data that we've seen, it is leveling off. So obviously, we have the Delta variant, but in this region, it's starting to level off. And then there's striking the balance between quality and safety. I don't think anybody would argue that offering classes offering classes in a virtual environment is ideal, especially in all disciplines. And so, you know, we don't want to sacrifice that quality, but we do have to balance it with safety. So we're trying to do our best and it's, there are hard decisions to make, but we're very aligned with all of them, you know, checked throughout the state and throughout the region in terms of all of the other colleges, just to make sure that I'm not that we're not, we don't have unrealistic expectations. Our office team has changed, Cindy, of course, retired. Tamika Thompson is promoted to director of campus operations. I should say interim director of campus operations at Longview, so we're happy, but sad to see her go. Tara Campbell resigned her position for personal reasons effective on July thirty. Eureka has joined the team as senior executive assistant to chancellor. Josh O'Brien, who's here, has joined the team as chief of staff, will put pictures, faces with names so that you know who they are, even though it's hard to see folks with these masks on. know who they are, even though it's hard to see folks with these masks on. Wanted to also give you an update on uh policy and procedure updates. Uh probably two years ago, three years ago, we uh started down this road of an overhaul or a comprehensive review of all of our policies. So within the last year in two thousand twenty-one, we had uh twenty-three new and or revised policies and procedures adopted. Eleven new revised decision policies and procedures pending. Right now, bulk of items from the legal unit and human resources have been this year, and you might remember I would have been good to include, I don't think we did, um it probably would have been good to include. Sometime ago, we had a chart and we showed you by department how we were gonna be approaching all of the policies. So this year's focus will be on business and finance and curriculum and instruction. Obviously, if there's some compliance needs or some change and other changes that we need to make, uh we will uh do so uh with other departments, but that'll be the intentional focus. Especially, is it I leave anything out that you wanna add? We had the MCCA Executive Leadership Retreat and we had a golf team and I think Michael Brown might know how to play a little bit of golf.
He does need a little bit of warm-up.
Yeah, yeah, he uh, he was knocking it apart. Many thanks to Sue uh Gatchis for uh joining us, uh because she has quite the athleticism as well and uh trustee Washington did great. I was the cart driver. I didn't, I, I stood for the picture with a golf club, but I did not. Every now and then they say, y'all, you wanna come and try? So uh I did not. Uh wanna also uh bring to your attention on a sad note that we lost a full-time employee, Police Officer Rusty Cotton, uh Russell, known as Rusty Cotton. Uh he passed away suddenly. And uh he served at the BR, I mean, at Blue River since two thousand twelve, worked in other law enforcement agencies and remembered for his sense of duty and dedication. Uh yesterday, we gave his daughter, who just graduated from high school and was enrolled at MCC, a scholarship for two thousand dollars, uh since that would have been the benefit that she would have received had he been living. So uh very sad to see him go and it was a very emotional uh time yesterday with uh with the family, so it was uh, it was good though. So she's taken care of. Uh Dr. Meyer and his whole team have rocked their arms around her already and provided her with the resources for her to be successful. Faculty Senate Report. She's got a new dude. I didn't even know that she was. The mask alone.
Oh, I know. Chancellor Beatty, Vice President Brown, members of the board, faculty, staff, administrators, and the public. Scientist Jacob Bernaskey wrote that knowledge is an unending adventure at the edge of uncertainty. As MCC approaches the start of the fall two thousand and one semester, it is a situation that is not exactly business as usual because of necessity and innovation. Faculty members are building new syllabus policies and language related quarantine, contact tracing, mask enforcement, and alternative assignments and attendance policies. MCC faculty and students are preparing for a semester that is not quite like what came before COVID nineteen. And while faculty are largely um optimistic that society has tools like vaccines and mask mandates, we're also pragmatists. I wrote this from quarantine myself as three members of my immediate family despite being fully vaccinated, all tested positive for symptomatic COVID nineteen. While my family members are recovering from their infections and I fleeing luckily to my negative status, it is a reminder that the pandemic situation is still changing with new surges and new variations. As faculty, the work ahead of us is much more than classroom teaching. After nearly a year and a half of virtual teaching, largely with some exceptions, the nervousness and excitement are palpable in the dozens of emails I receive hourly. Preparing for the unexpected, faculty are using daily seating charts when they can to help with contact tracing, they're writing language in their syllabus to encourage compliance with quarantine and isolation policies that could last for weeks for themselves and or clusters of students in their classes. There's an upcoming Innovation Academy cohort that's beginning this fall with which is an extension of the Chancery Innovation Council. That's a good one. The Guide to Pathways Project is also gearing up for a rollout next fall with faculty providing substantive feedback about the courses and options for the curriculum plans that MCC will help encourage our mission goals of retention and completion. At the brink of the fall semester, after more than a year of largely virtual teaching, I draw from the book Meaningful Hope for Teachers in Times of High Anxiety and Low Morale by Nolan Spitzler. Keep a classroom record of five good things that were achieved each day. Whatever that means, achievement should be acknowledged. Mark and celebrate your five victories. It matters. MCC faculty, full-time and part-time, I'm honored to represent you. And thank you. Please accept my gratitude for the tireless and often thankless work that you do behind the scenes and in the classroom, preparing for the uncertain future and hoping students develop the skills to do the same. And thank you to the support staff and the administration that empower the amazing and transformative things that happen in MCC classrooms, labs, and spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge we've got two new governance leaders uh that are joining us. Lisa Bray is the new governance leader for the Administraries Association. And uh Keith Castor, who is probably joining us virtually, uh is at Longview and he is the Staff Council representative, so we look forward to hearing from them in the future. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. So this time we're going to uh for trustees' business and uh we're gonna consent agenda. And I understand that as we uh go through the consent, there might be a item concerning uh two point three. So maybe we're we're gonna pull two point three. Were there any other? Uh two point two, sorry, two point two, approval of minutes. Were there any other uh consent items?
Oh, no. Pardon me. Are, are you asking these things so we don't vote on them all at once?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna read the uh background I can send. I guess I could. Agenda item of routine nature will be marked with an asterisk located immediately before the item. Unless a board member requests an item be removed for discussion, the agenda will be approved upon a motion in the second of the board, and unanimous adoption shall have the same validity as it, validity as if each action were separately moved, seconded, and adopted.
Okay, and so asterisk things have to be uh you have that, it only applies to asterisk things.
Uh currently, the items that, yes.
Okay.
Point two, two point three, two point four.
So we're not talking about five?
Uh it would, some of those items in the purchasing, uh five point eight is five point nine, five point ten, five point eleven, all the way through five point fifteen.
Yeah, I'd like to pull out some. I'll pull out uh five point one, two.
And see, um Treasury's report, or five point?
Five point one, two.
Five point twelve.
Correct. That's, that's it.
Very good. Anyone else? And so I'll take a motion uh to approve uh consent items, all those items except for the minutes two point two. Item two point two and the uh, looks like purchase of Kansas Star Archive, item five point one, two. I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Um, I guess we kinda need to know why you wanna remove it.
Well, we're, we're gonna circle back around and find out. Uh but this is just for uh the rest of the consent items that um were not removed. Did you um? Okay, so I'll take a roll call. Uh trustee Martin?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reed?
Hi.
Trustee Washington?
Hi.
Very good. It looks like it's in, in the passes. So let's go to uh item number two point two, approval of the minutes.
Actually, I need some.
Point for clarification.
Trustee Reed?
I don't think you called on yourself to, to vote in that last vote, uh although it did pass. Uh I don't believe I heard you.
True, I did not. Uh in that's an odd, you know, trustee Reed, that's a, that's, that was whether or not the chair votes or not, that's a very good question. They follow the vote.
No, I, I've, I've chaired meetings for the past decade and the chair does vote, so yes.
Okay, thank you, trustee Reed. Uh see, I told you I needed you here. Uh, I vote aye. For those consent items that were not pulled. Very good. And then trustee Martin, point two, you needed some advice on?
Yes, two, two point two uh are the minutes from the last meeting. And there is basically a typographical or editorial change. Does that require a motion?
You can move to amend to specifically state, yes, corrected by interlineation.
Okay. Then I move to amend the minutes of the last meeting so that very beginning, under the chancellor's comments, we um made an error in identifying uh Dr. Jill Biden. Uh here she appears as second lady and we all know she's first lady. That's my reason. So I am asking to amend the minutes to reflect first lady status for Mrs. Biden, second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Uh any comp, any discussion? You know, I didn't ask if uh there were any opposition on that last vote. Uh we'll do a roll call vote. Uh trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Osborne? Trustee Reed?
Which, which one are we voting on now? Are we still on the last one? Are we all first lady?
First lady.
Okay, I went to ladies, aye.
First lady. We're gonna change the language.
Give it change, aye.
Aye, and then uh trustee Washington?
Aye.
And then uh trustee Brown, aye. So if we could make that correction. I would most appreciate it for our historical record. And now we can take up the issue of uh five point twelve on the consent agenda, trustee Holmes. Nettin.
I don't have anything to add, I just want to go to one.
I see. So Dr. Beatty, what is the Kansas Star Archive that we're purchasing?
Uh this item, this is an online uh database that um would give our students and staff access to the Kansas Star records from eighteen eighty to present for an opportunity. This will support teaching and learning in the classroom and uh various classes.
Very good. I'll take a motion to approve.
I approve approval.
Very good, a second. We'll take one of the movement, one of the second, thank you. Any discussion? And and trustee Beatty, and so this is a database. They can do articles and do, do they get the full article or they just get a synopsis of the article?
The whole article.
Get the full article and they're able to print it out and that type of thing? It's a terrific thing. Uh how long does it last?
Forever.
Holy mackerel, that's awesome for this number. That's fabulous. Are we, do you think we could share that with, oh, never mind. There might be other entities who would have an interest in that. Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Uh we'll call roll. Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Day.
Trustee Reed?
Hi.
Trustee Washington?
Hi.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
So that motion passes and and that looks like we have done it for consent. Now, there. Doctor Beatty. All right, you still in the work?
No, we're done. We're in regular session.
Yeah, point, point of, you keep calling her Beatty. It's Beatty, dude. You're Dr. Beatty.
That is true, and she, she's corrected me before too. Dr. Beatty, I apologize.
Yeah, I can hear it loud and clear. I probably heard you say it in person many times. That incorrect. Get it right, man. Dr. Beatty. Her husband would like that.
It constricts my facial. Dr. Beatty, I apologize for that. I'm a lifelong learner. Thank you, trustee Reed. And so, uh so are we going into looks like
Two point six.
Two point six board policy approval of human resources.
Uh we brought this policy for lodging at the last board meeting, and this is regarding our recruitment and hiring. That one thing I'd point out is that there uh, this policy still aligns and allows for uh alignment with the MNEA contract where applicable. So for example, when they uh, for committees and how they should be structured in the MNEA agreement, it says that the dean the dean of instruction would serve on the committee. Specifically, we make sure that that is still included in this policy and I recommend it.
I'll take a motion for its approval.
So moved.
And uh so we'll take a, Holmes raises hand, we'll take a second uh from uh trustee Washington. Uh any discussion? Any questions? We'll take a roll call vote uh for approval. Uh trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes? Trustee Reed?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Washington? Trustee Brown, aye, so that that measure approves. Uh let's move on to two point seven board policy approval risk management.
Two point seven uh risk management. This is our workers' comp policy and uh I recommend approval. It was lodged uh at our last board meeting.
Very good. I'll take a motion for approval.
Motion.
So move uh uh trustee Holmes, I'll take a second.
Second.
Very good. Trustee Washington, all those in favor, just say aye.
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 All those opposed? Very good. The motion passes. Two point eight, Dr. Beatty, board policy approval, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Beatty.
Um, this is for, you just asked about distance learning. This is um our policy for distance learning. In revising the policy, we created a policy and procedure. The main uh difference you will see are the definitions that are included in here from the Higher Learning Commission. I recommend approval.
Very good. I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Trustee Holmes, I'll take a second.
Second.
Trustee Martin, thank you. Um all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. Looks like that motion carried two point eight. Very good, it looks like that motion carries, two point eight. Two point nine, biannual adoption of board policy, conflict of interest and code of ethics.
Kind of speaks for itself, this is our biannual uh approval that we bring to the board and uh so we're recommending approval for our ethics, excuse me, ethics policy.
Very good, I think a a motion for approval.
So move.
Very second? Marty, any discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Very good. Like two point nine is uh passed. We're going to uh three point one administration. No. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Looks like personnel, no? Five point one, business. Finance.
We presented the uh details of treasurer's report in the work session, it took questions and discussion. Uh the full report is here and he recommend approval.
I'll take a motion for approval. Sir second, Holmes, uh any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those, aye, all those opposed? Very good, Dr. Beatty, it looks like. Uh let me make sure. Five point two.
Media buying services, uh we have brought this item, I brought this company to the board in the previous uh during our R and P. We continue to expand and evaluate our brand. This last effort with our attachment efforts and strategic planning have helped us to see it's time for us to revisit. Just take another look at it, this is a good practice, every three to five years, organizations look at their brand or, you know, around five years and this hasn't been evaluated since in two thousand seventeen, I think I saw some stuff from two thousand sixteen, two thousand, yeah, two thousand sixteen's last time it was evaluated. This type of uh strategy will help us to identify how we're going to uh target uh our strategies moving forward in our uh markets.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. And I'm looking for a motion for approval. What's my? Trustee Washington, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, my trustee Reed, has any discussion?
I do have.
Trustee Martin?
Uh chancellor, would you um try to describe for me, I know it it may not be possible at this point, but it appears that a RICO is going to be doing two things. One, it's the brand, but they're also doing media buying?
Yes.
How is this uh distributed? Because that's what they did, excuse, that's what they did for us in the past, right, is media purchase, current, okay.
So how is the amount that we are requesting being distributed? I think I have a spreadsheet. Uh I think I have a uh spreadsheet that would um highlight the details of the uh dollars and how we spend marketing dollars. This specific amount here, I think for the most part is going to go to this branding uh initiative. In addition, there's some apprenticeship, uh some other marketing programs and Dr. Swanson is back there giving me a nod that she has something to add to that, so I'll let her add that.
I apologize.
No need to apologize.
So so this particular item includes the advertising placement of which about two hundred and twenty-five thousand of it is our regular advertising that we would be placing and includes also advertising for some of our grants like apprenticeship and the Educational Opportunity Center. The remainings up to seven thousand would go to the brand initiative.
Did you have, no, I forgot how much additional money we have for marketing?
So our overall, do you count um personnel, all of our digital advertising, so we, our Google Ads, those types of things? Um. If you put it all together, it's right around a million dollars.
Okay.
Including the personnel that we have.
What's personnel, I don't quite understand.
So personnel, graphic designers, photographers, videographers, writers, um our public relations work, which is a big part of our marketing and branding.
Okay.
Dr. Swanson? Yes, um I think it was just last evening, I saw um an E O C. Mm-hmm. Which is, it really got my attention and I didn't even realize what I was watching until then, so it was a good job. Can you say anything more about how does one go about um assessing the brand? I guess that's what they're going to do.
If there's a three, there's a phased approach, they um will conduct some interviews, luckily through our strategic planning process and the charrettes that we've had, we've already had uh some, we already have some of that information. But it's the voice of the customer, going out and uh talking with uh the voice of the customer, having some internal conversations, developing a strategy based upon what they learned, and then we will um make some decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then Dr. Beatty, were they um during this, are they, were, maybe show us what they're working on?
We can certainly give you a report after the work is done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Question, Mr. Vice Chair.
Uh trustee Reed?
Yep, thank you, um I I just want to command um the communication staff and Dr. Beatty, uh your leadership team for your forward thinking. Um we have talked about this in our last board retreat in terms of marketing efforts on behalf of the college, and I think that this is a a step in the right direction, I know that there potentially should be uh it could be more uh windows of opportunity for us to do more branding on behalf of M C C. Uh in making sure that we are the number one brand that people see. Just the other night, I was out at the Royals game, as I had been uh past couple of weeks and uh see, saw the brand there and was talking to some of the staff members out at the uh at the K and they were talking about how they're students at M C C, so they were glad to see uh our marketing efforts there and saw uh some of our marketing efforts on side of uh buses and some of the uh shelters and other places within the the entire community. I know that there's still some room for improvement, I think that uh what this uh money will allow uh it's been allocated for allows us to further enhance uh some of that work, and so I'm looking forward to 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 some of the outcomes for that and also uh the work ahead, so I think we're moving in the right direction and I wanted to uh really just give a uh some sort of uh appreciation to you guys so that you hear that from us, I know that we often say here's where ways that you should approve or you can approve. I think this is uh has, has been improved and uh hoping that uh we see more results from, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee. He, your question? Comment? I'll take a motion to approve uh item five point two purchase media buying service.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, there's already a discussion, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee, aye. Thank you, Dr. Beatty, uh item five point three.
Item five point three is uh furniture, uh we had a so when we brought this item originally for furniture, actually, Dr. Chrisell and I had a lot of conversation about this and some of the other uh a couple of other items that are in here. In terms of, do we go to the board and ask for an open uh a blank check, which I knew wasn't gonna fly? Or do we come to the board and ask for things as needed? Uh this, again, associated with the move initially was our thought in bringing this uh to the board and when we brought it is um uh for the move and not knowing what to anticipate in terms of furniture, but as um we know all happened, we had uh COVID. Once we realized that we were able to use COVID doll, we were able to use COVID dollars to do a furniture replacement that we uh went through, we came back and asked for more because we used that money to replace um the furniture. Now this is for the purchase of furniture for advanced technical skills institutes, I just wanted to give you that uh history as to why this, we have come back for additional authority and it is likely that we could come back again because we are still in the moving process, but you know, it was either come and ask for blanket authority with a furniture company through bidding process or to ask you for additional authority as we needed it and we chose to take the second route. And I recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, I'll take a motion to approve five point three. And move my homes, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Martin? Uh any discussion? Any question? All those in favor, five point three purchases?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Beatty, item five point four.
Michael Brown, you're gonna have to get our name right, uh but we're gonna send you to one of those classes on Monday so that you can learn how to pronounce the Dr. Beatty's name.
Okay, so answer, there was a question, there there's a, you know, I served with a representative Beatty. Um Gail McCain Beatty. And um you know, I I served with her for five or six years and she didn't mind me calling her that.
That's the thing, you did think Gail's name.
Yeah, so she didn't mind because you had it right.
Yeah, right.
So you had a lot of practice, so you're you're proving my point, Monday we sent you to class, bro.
Thank you. Thank you. She was in our leadership, you know. Thank you, Dr. Beatty, I I apologize, uh thank you, trustee.
Item five point four, moving expenses, this is the, well, obviously we talked about this quite a bit during the um work session, but this is the same type of situation in terms of on-call moving services, as it says in the item, and we want to bring this to you on a project by project basis. And uh this will be for moving the equipment from B T. And again, until we finish through this process, we will likely come back again and ask for more authority on moving expenses because we still have A T S I, I mean, we still have uh the Blue River East Campus, so there's just give me a heads up.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, I'll take a motion to approve. Well. Move my trustee Holmes, can I have a second? Thank you, trustee Washington, all of them favor item five point four?
Aye.
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 Very good, trustee Reed?
Aye.
Make sure uh motion's been approved, item five point four. Dr. Beatty?
Uh five point five, this is um water mitigation and recovery, we uh had a incident in the A C where we had a water uh water leak with the major water damage and I executed the emergency authority by contacting the board chair who gave us authority to move forward, so this is a ratification um of this item and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, I'll take a motion to approve. Second, thank you, trustee Holmes, trustee Washington, any more questions, any discussion? And Dr. Beatty, was this a, where would, where did we have this incident occur?
In the A C, uh in the administrative center.
Oh, that's your building?
Yes.
I see, in the, is it still, um are there, is it still water or?
No, I think we've gotten it handled.
Very good, very good.
And this is our insurance, it'll, you know, largely be covered by insurance.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Beatty.
There's no way that that water get to the rest of the second floor and be?
I have to uh share um Dr. Chrisell, Mr. Homlen, I have to share with you some concerns that have emerged about the bathrooms.
I bring them up periodically, so thank you for don't be mean. You rent the next week and that way if you don't.
Uh I take a vote, all of the favor item five point five, purchase for administrative center water mitigation and recovery?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh I, sorry.
Good thing.
Uh next item is for uh to replace the uh building skylights at Maplewood's campus. A similar issue, uh the water that they are so long for replacing when it rains. They stand under the skylight and they can sing in the rain if they like. So we want to make sure that we get those replaced because they shouldn't have to sing in the rain in any building in uh in M C C.
Does that help our student?
I'm sorry.
I take a motion for approval.
Second.
Very good, trustee Holmes, trustee Martin, uh any discussion? All those in favor, five point six?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Dr. Beatty, five point eight?
Seven.
Very good, thank you.
Uh this is our student experience and retention consulting, we are um heightening, as you heard in the faculty senate's comments, our focus on uh retention. And more importantly, I think trustee Brown asked me at the last meeting, what have we learned from COVID? And I've been saying, what are we gonna keep, trash or tweak? And some of the things we learned through COVID, like the virtual advising and how students move through our enrollment process and how we could change our processes to make them more seamless for students that instead of them coming and then walking away, that would create a better uh experience for our students. So we're engaging this uh contract, this consulting firm to uh go through that process with us.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Beatty, I'll take a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee Martin, a second? Very second?
Second.
And trustee Reed, uh any questions? Uh Dr. Beatty, I have a question, you know, my daughter is working in improvement and retention and she's finding, she says that the university that she works in is seriously behind the times. And then she's, she says there are databases and things out there that they can tie into that helps students along the way for their career and their planning and all those wonderful details. And somehow we're missing some of that, especially at the university that she's currently working in. So the consultants are probably gonna come in and identify maybe some of these things.
Well, and and I would, I would add to that, uh that we have a lot of, one of the things we've learned already is we have a lot of the practices. We're just not consistent in that experience, so if you if a student goes to Longview or goes to Maplewood, how they move through the process should be the same. To the point that you're making, we have a career exploration software uh and we have career services, but it's typically on the back end where if we move that to the front end where a student can make informed intent about how they wanna, how they wanna navigate or what their major would be so that they can be successful and get a job afterwards instead of going through a program and then saying, oh, I think I wanna do this, and then they realize that's not what they want, they have to go back and get retrained, so that's just an example for what your daughter's experiencing. I won't say that we're out of date, but our our processes aren't always streamlined and aligned in a way because we've got some good stuff happening, but it's not happening. Because we've got some good stuff happening, but it's not happening consistently. So we're gonna take all these good practices that are happening across the college and put them in a streamlined process that's consistent for our students.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Any other questions? All those in favor? 5.7?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Dr. Beatty, 5.8? All those, any opposed? Thank you, Trustee Holmes. If that issue passes, 5.7? Thank you. And then, Dr. Beatty, 5.8? Thank you.
Item 6.1 is lease agreement for Children Mercy Hospital for parking spaces, especially as we're continuing. We still have some virtual classes. We know we have these spaces available. And it's a revenue generating opportunity for us. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. I take a motion for approval, 6.1? Trustee Holmes, Trustee Washington, thank you. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor, 6.1?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Trustee. Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Beatty, 6.2?
Item 6.2 is, we have an on-call engineer and we are looking to make some improvements, capital improvements to Penn Valley Campus's central heating and cooling plant. And recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. I'll take a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Reed. Thank you, Trustee. Any questions? I have one question. Dr. Beatty, what is M and R funding?
Maintenance or repair.
Very good. So that's coming out of the funding that we set aside, many look at as ongoing.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. All those in favor of item 6.2, Penn Valley, super plant improvements?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Very good. Dr. Beatty, 6.3?
6.3 is a self-initiated, not self-initiated, MCC initiated change order. This is the item that we discussed in the work session regarding the inspection, dismantling, crating, and re-putting the items back together in the infrastructure that currently exists at the ATSI. And having one person do it, do that work.
Thank you. I'll take a motion for approval. Trustee Holmes, thank you, Trustee Washington. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor, item 6.3, change order?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Looks like we're at 7.1.
7.1 is consent. We do have a public, we do have a public comment. I didn't highlight that on your sheet.
Very good. I appreciate that. And then do we have our guest who is?
Yes. Mr. Todd Gueranger, he is the president of the MNEA and requested to make comment regarding the non-fraternization policy.
Evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Thank you, Vice Chairman. Thank you, board members. As MNEA union president, I would like to thank you for allowing these decisions. The union council passed the balling resolution and I would like it included in its entirety in the public face of minutes. Whereas the non-fraternization policy was lodged in January and approved in March by board trustees that went through no shared governance process, an occurrence that has never happened in our recalled history at MCC. Whereas the revision of this policy did go through shared governance, was altered by person or persons unknown higher up the chain of command at MCC with no explanation, was removed from the standards of conduct policy approved in June. Whereas a blanket non-fraternization policy has been deemed by governance groups and process systems at MCC to be disproportionately harmful to the LGBTQ plus community. Whereas the language in this policy requires employees, contractors, board members, and vendors to disclose their sexual orientation if their partner takes a single course at MCC, even if there is no supervisory or evaluative role that would cause concern for exploitation or abuse of power. Whereas the policy goes against MCC's spirit of MCC's own non-discrimination policy, board policy 3.0010, which states MCC prohibits discrimination, including harassment against any individual on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, including sexual orientation, pregnancy, gender identity, or expression, including transgender status, age, national origin, disability, genetic information, or any other class protected by law. Whereas the policy is so sweeping in scope that it may constitute harassment and is an unreasonable invasion of privacy that results in an outing policy for a protected class even when there is no potential for exploitation in a relationship. Whereas the blanket policy assumes a cisgender heteronormative and anti-feminist lens. Whereas key stakeholders such as community members, faculty, students, adjunct faculty have not been included in the process even though the policy impacts the aforementioned groups. Whereas a blanket policy that is inequitable to a marginalized group cannot be made equitable through procedures. Therefore, MCC NEA Union Council views this policy base passed by the MCC Board of Trustees in March of 2021 as a hostile action towards members of the LGBTQ plus community at MCC. We would respectfully ask that the MCC Board of Trustees would take steps to authorize a revision of the blanket policy to be crafted by the chancellor's policy review committee with language that protects students and employees from potentially exploitive relationships while not harming an already marginalized population. We further suggest that MCC include its diversity, equity, and inclusion voices from the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you again for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Dr.
We're give us a moment. Let's see, Brown, how to communicate. The Trustee Holmes?
First of all, I'm the one who spearheaded this in the 2020. And I found out that employees can date students and that's all there was to it. And I asked around to my friends in the business community who worked for big corporations, can you date your employees? And the answer was no. So then we got pushed back from people who said that they're consenting adults. And us in the business community said, well, it doesn't really matter if they're consenting adults. They're employees dating students and it's gonna get us sued. So then we began checking what other schools do. We checked with K-State, King, North Eastern, and Boston, and they have anti-fraternizations. So in early 2021, I began with Trustee Skaggs pushing us through. And I would pick up the phone and I would call Trustee Martin and I'd say, are we talking, are we working with teachers? Do they know what we're doing? What are their opinions? And I didn't hear anything back. And then as time goes on, we began pushing this thing. And the reason is because us business people see this as a great big fat loss. So whether you're gay, and by the way, the issue of being gay never had anything to do with it. It never came up in any of our discussions. So here's the way it is. If you're a teacher or employee, you can't date students, period. That's all there is to it.
Thank you, Trustee Holmes. We're good.
I just want to add a quick comment. I don't think any of us, we appreciate your comments, truly. But no one was thinking about this being an anti-LGBTQ issue. As you know, Trustee Barnes, Brown, myself, and Trustee Skaggs have all also been in Jefferson City where this has been a concern. In fact, one of my own friends had to leave because I think sometimes when we are looking from the outside, we don't see that anyone in a higher position in the legal world has superior power over anyone under them. So like me as a senator, you don't have to work for me. If you're not a fellow senator, you're beneath me in the legal world. So I cannot have any fraternization, whether or not you work in my office or not. And unfortunately, the same is true when we have faculty members because they're just seen in the law as positions of power. And we actually, with Trustee Holmes, Trustee Mark, and Trustee Skaggs already working on this, it just so happened that we actually had an issue. And we didn't have a policy that could put that, and without a policy, that puts our entire institution at risk. So I think that we do hear what you guys are saying. And we have talked about trying to figure out a way to make sure this works for everybody. But I will have to say as an attorney, as someone who has witnessed this in Jefferson City, he's witnessed this, that we have to remember that I don't have to be your student. If I am a student, period. If I'm at my zoo and I'm a student, period. I can't date a professor, period. Now, we can get married when I graduate or whatever, but if I'm dating you, I am putting the institution at risk. So I think that we have to keep that in mind. And no one's saying that you have to tell me what your sexual preferences are, and I definitely understand that. But we do have to make sure that we have this institution that is safe for all of our students.
Jefferson Brown.
Dr. Beatty, I wanted to say thank you for your comments today. And we appreciate your time and coming in and presenting your, your argument on this issue. It's important for us and it's something that we care about. And so as you can hear, we're conscious and we want to work with all communities within our property and the staff and all those folks who may feel a certain way. So what we're gonna do is probably, now I appreciate the trustees, you know, we didn't have anyone to speak to about this issue. But what we're gonna do is try and communicate in the future through the chancellor. And I think that might be best. If we're to come up with a response, we're gonna maybe, if we need to, probably might have a question or two, might follow up on. But we're gonna probably turn this over to the chancellor and communicate in a way that represents the school. We appreciate your time and coming today and what you can say. I hope the trustees made their points and so thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
I think that might be it. And we are going to go into closed session right now. So pursuant to section 610.01 subsection blah, 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 illegal actions, cause of accident litigation, financial privilege, leasing, purchase and sale of real estate, hiring and firing discipline of most employees, seal bids, documents, individually identifiable personal records of performance rate. We're gonna look for a motion to go into a closed session.
Second.
And then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, we need a roll call. Roll call. Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Osborne? Trustee Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Washington? Trustee Brown? Aye. But we're in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Appreciate all of you.